Good evening, Nick. This call is made in the interest of the Council to order for Monday, August 25th, 2022. Mr. Lauer, go ahead.
Mr. Shanafell?
Here.
Dr. Porosco?
Here.
Mr. Arcurry?
Here.
Mr. Steiger?
Present.
Mr. Cozer?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Okay, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda will be the approval of the minutes from July 25th, 2022. Do you have a move?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose carries seven, nothing. Special reports, we're showing nothing here. Takes us to audience comments. It's an opportunity for a member of the audience to address council on a non-agenda item for up to five minutes. Anybody in the audience wish to address council at this time? Okay, see now we'll move into unfinished business. There is non-new business. First item will be the ordinance amending the 2022 budget.
And I will leave this up to council. I know that Mr. Narowski went in great detail over the budget amendment at the last time around. I can do the same, or if there's no need for that, I don't think that...
I'll make a motion that we approve the 2022 budget amendment.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion from council, members of the audience? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose carries seven, nothing. Next item will be an ordinance amending the Peters Township code of ordinance as chapter 440 of zoning. We had a public hearing on two weeks ago. I'm not sure that there's much more that anybody on council can add to this, but feel free at this time. If anybody wants to discuss anything.
I would like to purpose your vote, though, with a couple observations. One of the things that, having watched the public hearing, that I think you need to be careful of is that I think it would be easy for people to believe what was being voted on is Al Nyer's development proposal, and that is not what's being voted on. What's being voted on are changes to the zoning district. And where Al Nyer has a sales agreement for the development of this property, there is no guarantee that, in fact, that is, in fact, the development that will occur there. There are lots of things in that process that could change. And where I, if I was a betting man, I would bet that Al Nyer is going to move ahead with this, as has been shown, but there's no guarantee of that. Now, I just think that that's important, that people understand that. You know, and the other thing is, there are lots of uses that are permitted in this district, and this would, this amendment would expand that slightly, but it isn't as though there aren't lots of other types of activities that are permitted there as a matter of right. So there could be a different type of multifamily development there. There could be commercial developments there. There could be a mini casino there as a permitted use. So again, my only concern is that we don't conflict the discussion with Al Nyer to what the actual development of the property is, and where that's likely to be the development, there's no guarantee that that's the development. The other, the other thing is, what you're voting on are changes to a specific sub-district, and that sub-district is located on the far end of Route 19. But, and where that is true, that it affects everything in that sub-district, the fact of matter is, if you look at the sub-district, this is the last large piece of vacant land that is there. So if these, if these changes are made, it will affect the entire zoning district, but its impact will be on that vacant piece of property that is sitting there. So, and again, I know when the presentation was made, there was all these references to luxury apartments, and I think that is Al Nyer's intention if he develops the property. But the fact of the matter is, what's permitted now are structures that kind of look like this, and if you make this zoning change, what's permitted are structures that look like this, and where this is an attractive structure, I don't know that I would necessarily call this luxury apartments. And so the thing that you have with, with Al Nyer's proposal is, as we have seen it to date, and there's not been a formal filing, but what we have seen to date would be done as a conditional use, which will allow council a lot more latitude in terms of determining how that development looks in the long run. So, you know, I, again, I'm just concerned that when you vote on this, that we're not thinking we're voting to approve a specific thing. The other thing that...
Oh, I have a question for you. Not to interrupt. So if you want us to assume that this has nothing to do with the proposal from the developer, then why are you recommending that we change this?
Well, and I'm going to get to that, but the other thing that, before we do that, if I could, I don't think we provided you this image the last time. One of the changes are to eliminate these type of parking facilities throughout the township. These are two examples that exist in the township. Regardless of what you think of the other zoning changes, I think these things are aesthetically problematic. These are actually two good pictures of these kinds of structures. There are some of these structures that have storage under there in addition to being used as, as parking spaces. But, Mr. Arcurry, to answer your question, the reason why I favor this change is for a couple reasons. One of the things that I think universally I hear from people who move into the community about why they move in here is, there may be a myriad of things, but the one that's always included is lower taxes. And part of the reason why there are lower taxes is you move across the Allegheny County line and you have lower, lower county taxes. But one of the problems in Peters Township is that we lack a diversified tax base. The fact of the matter is, this community has largely been developed residential. There is a very small commercial strip, and anything that can be done to even a small way diversify the tax base, I think is a good thing. So when you, when you hear what is being suggested is that you're going to develop a, a residential community that has 240 to 250 units in it, the reason I think that that's appealing is that if, that that property will generate a tremendous amount of property tax, it will generate a tremendous amount of wage tax, and it will not demand public services at the same time. So if you took that size development and you translated it into a single-family residential community, you would easily be looking at a mile of road that the township would have to maintain, including winter maintenance. You would look at probably two miles of, of storm sewer that we would have to maintain, probably a mile of sanitary sewer that, that one of the sanitary authorities would, would have to maintain, and you would have none of that, because all of the maintenance of those kinds of things inside of this residential community would all be done privately. The other thing is, you know, I was talking to Chief McLaughlin, and you know, one of the things he says about it is that it's less in terms of the demands for the fire department in the sense that this building will be sprinkled, and it will be sprinkled in such a way that it's self-suppressing, so that in fact you won't rely upon the fire department as much to be able, if you had a fire at this structure, to respond and suppress the fire. And you know, and if you look at the school district, this by its very nature will generate far less children than a single-family development would, would have. So you generate school taxes, but you don't, you don't also carry with it the obligation of paying the cost of educating those, those children. The other reason why I would, and again, if this moves forward with, particularly with Al Nyer's development, the thing that I believe is that this is the one opportunity to solve the traffic problem on Gally and Water Dam Road without the township expending large sums of money to do it, because this will require a highway occupancy permit from PennDOT. The township's going to be insistent that, that there be a traffic light at Gally and Water Dam, and that there be turning lanes to, to make that, that traffic signal work. Now, that development will be contributing traffic impact fees, which we will be required to apply to that project, but it will not be anywhere near, that contribution won't be anywhere near what it's going to take to be able to, to do that traffic signal. So that's the reason why.
Wouldn't any development there, a lot of the developments that are on that list that are permitted uses, wouldn't they generate and require the intersection to be improved without, maybe without any contribution by the township? I mean, wouldn't that be, wouldn't that hold true no matter what?
Whether it would depend on the nature, it would depend on the nature of the development and the scale of it.
Or you're going to put a, you know, whatever. Maybe not a funeral home wouldn't generate any need for that, which would then, you know, go away. I mean, I just don't understand the reasoning here. I mean, I got a real problem with, with this development, even though we're supposed to look at it this way. I, I agree with you that the three-sided garage thing should go and the other things, but unfortunately, we can't vote individually on those. And, you know, we had a public hearing, and I don't think anybody other than the developer spoke in favor of this. And everything that I've gotten from the public through the website or just running into people in the township, no one has said that they're in favor of this. And I still believe that you're going to be dumping a lot of traffic already on an existing issue. And it's like what Bob Atkinson said back when, when they wanted to, when Chesapeake wanted to get drilling rights to the park. He said, "That oil and gas isn't going anywhere, and neither is this parcel." So why would we create a problem with traffic that we already have? We're just exacerbating that. Plus, I tend to agree with Mr. Lewis's comment that, that, you know, there's just too much on this, for that site. It's too much development, and I don't buy for one second the comments that were made during the public hearing that they could, under the existing ordinance, build 300 units, because if they could, that's what they would do. They're making money. I mean, who would build less and ask for a change to build less? That doesn't make any sense to me. And so I'm telling you right now, I'm not going to vote for everyone.
I agree. I've heard nothing but opposition from the public, and Mr. Lauer, you've been the biggest cheerleader in favor of it, and I think that's kind of concerning.
I, that, I would take exception with Gary. I do not, I am not a cheerleader for any particular development that...
I guess my comments rather parallel what I've said earlier, but yes, it is, in my mind, too much for the corner that this property is bounded by. My, I really do respect some of the benefits of considering the changes that are within this ordinance. The one that I just choke on is making it unlimited with regard to how many units can be in the particular building. A choice of that, at this point in time, I think is extremely premature. We've not really seen a concept. To me, when we would be presented with a concept, we could realistically consider if there were departures to this size of a building, we could take that into a valuation at that time. But now, this is premature, it's a bad move, and I, you know, have been a negative against moving in this direction since its inception, and will be again tonight.
Well, as you all know, I voted in favor of it the first time, but that was before the public outcry. Now, we like to think that we're here to serve the residents of the township, and if the majority of the residents of the township don't want it, then I don't think, you know, we should be, we should be passing it, quite honestly. I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, something's going to get built there, and the land's too valuable for, you know, to stay empty forever, but I don't know that we should be making these accommodations, particularly if the residents don't want them. I mean, I hope the residents that didn't support this understand that this isn't, you know, this may be a pure victory at the end of the day, because ultimately, what you end up with may be a worse project than this, but ultimately, if the residents don't want it, I'm not voting for it.
I don't necessarily agree that the majority of residents don't want this. I mean, we had a sample size of a public hearing of 20 people.
I understand, Tommy.
With 20,000 people.
Every resident of this township's got the same opportunity to come here and speak their mind, and I didn't have one resident from the township call me or email me and tell me they were in support of this, so...
Yeah, and I think we've all agreed that we've sampled, you know, residents in our community, friends, family, whatnot, and I've heard mixed reviews for this. Honestly, more for it. The location, I think, is perfect as far as what type of facility you would be putting here. I would not be in favor of this if it was right in the middle of the township, but on the outskirts right here, I think it's perfect. I do think it's a diversity of housing that we don't offer and have in Peters Township. I agree with everything that Paul had said and appreciate his, his words on this, and I still would be in favor of having this developed here. And maybe I'm wrong, but it's something that I think we need in Peters Township at some point. Maybe this isn't the right time, but I think that eventually this is going to be developed, and we're going to have to deal with this one way or another, and I felt that Al Nyer had a good plan moving forward, and I thought they gave an outstanding presentation. So I will still be voting for this.
I echo what Dr. Porosco said, but I do have a question. Would there be any way to let us know what benefits of having this type of structure in that, in the business district? Like, what could that bring to the business district? Could it attract more restaurants or more, you know, diverse companies to come into the area?
More people bring more commercial, office, retail. It could have benefits to the corridor in that respect.
That's something that I've always been in favor of. I think we need different types of businesses to the area and a denser population rate there. I figured it would, you know, bring more interest to different types of vendors, but just wanted to clarify.
I think I'll share with other council members, there's a large apartment complex that was built next to the Port Authority trolley station. It was opened, I think, probably last, about a year, year and a half ago, and I did inquire, and it is on a waiting list. It's completely full, and I really didn't know the status of that, but if you go across the way to what had been called, well, it's the older apartment that's actually a trolley stop.
Dorchester?
Dorchester. They're looking for people, because most of the people that were there moved over to this newer facility, but...
Trolley station.
Are you talking about the one by South Hills?
Dorchester, no, yeah. So I think there is a market out there, although the attractiveness of public transportation option there is something that we can't offer. But there are benefits to a development like this. I think we can still enjoy those benefits when we have a project that we can mold and model to our liking with regard to its size and its discipline, and not open the door with a cart blanche that there's no limit to how many units you can put out there. I'll be shut up.
I personally, I see everybody's points. I guess the part that scared me was the one picture. You go back, Paul, you know, what could be built if that's by right, the picture of the apartments, the old one.
Let me see where that's at.
If you really could build 300 of those, and that's by right, that's the part that got me was if I could, if you could build a brand-new facility that's, you know, has the pool and all the stuff, I would take that over this. Now, Frank Currie, you're right, I don't know if it is 300. We don't, no, we said, we don't know, right? That was thrown out there, so I looked and thought, 300 of that versus the other, I'll take the other if it's my choice. But we don't really know, I guess, at this point, how many you could build on their, their liking kind.
Problem, though, at that point is you have all the land that they didn't use, so that ends up getting subdivided and built into God only knows what else. It's not going to sit there as vacant land. If Al Nyer can tell me that they're willing to donate the township the rest of that property, then maybe I could go for it, but I mean, I see where this is going.
Mr. Caiman wants to speak.
Is anybody else in council? Anything else? Hard open up.
Good evening, I'm John Caiman. I'm counsel for Al Nyer, and we did, we were here last month for the public hearing and heard some of the questions, particularly the questions asked by Mr. Arcurry, and I believe have some answers that may be helpful to you for, for that perspective. So, so in addition to the items, in addition to the items...
Want to lay them flat, maybe? Can we project them on the camera?
I'm going to try. I have.
If you lay it flat on the table, what's it...
Yeah, they have the overhead log here.
There you go.
We haven't used that for a while.
And John, you can refer to the screen if you need to.
Can we get it reduced just a little bit in terms of...
I think you got it upside down.
Yeah, it's flipping around.
Yeah, maybe that'll show better.
Go down.
He's moving.
Think you were better off the other way.
Put up the large drawing.
Thank you. Give us a second. So there were a couple of questions that were asked at the last meeting. The first was, what are really the impacts of this development, this type of development? So removing the 36-unit restriction and allowing it to be in one, one structure or two structures as opposed to the multiple structures? So we asked our in-house architects and engineers and gateway to take a look at this, and this would be very close to the site plan that we would present. Couple of things I wanted to highlight here. First of all, the total, the total impervious area here is four acres. So that's essentially like a third of the site that would be ultimately built up versus now what would be eight acres that would be left alone. If we were to develop it, and we did have our architects and engineers look at two different as-of-right models, so this one right now is 246 units. This is also 246 units. We've respected the same riparian buffers, we've respected the same setbacks and all the other items that are in your ordinance as-of-right. This can be done right now, and you see the impervious area jumps from four acres to 5.2 acres. This is essentially an as-of-right plan that we're showing you right now compared to what we're moving for.
Can I jump in there real quick?
Yes.
The, the impervious nature of this site, this isn't out of the goodness of your heart. It costs you guys more money to treat an additional runoff volume that's going to be generated.
Right, it also costs us more money to move the dirt.
Right, so this isn't just, you know, trying to be environmentally friendly. There's a cost savings by you guys eliminating...
Well, I mean, there's more than just a cost savings associated with it.
This plan would actually be a much cheaper construction cost than what we're proposing. This would be three-story walk-up...
Similar to what you saw.
Structures, 100% surface parking, and what we're currently proposing is, we'll actually be close to 50% shelter parking, which would include subgrade parking and partial structure parking, which adds, you know, per unit or per stall can be $25,000 per stall when you're adding structure parking. Those are the reasons that in the amenity package, the courtyard, the pool, the tenant lounge, the two-story lobby, those are the quality of amenities that we, we need to get a certain density to support that quality of development that we can't get from this type of development, because it's a lower-quality product and it costs less to build. There's plenty of developers out there that would be willing to build this. We are not one of them. We would see this as below the standard of product that we would be willing to deliver, but I just wanted to point that out, that this would be a cheaper development project.
Right, and it would result in cheaper rents and also a cheaper overall product that, that you would expect, as you talked about, the diversity of housing stock that Mr. Lauer noted. We showed the third plan, too. So we also had sort of a, a max-out. So that's not a max-out, this is more of a max-out area. This would have some cover parking, some non-cover parking. On this, the disturbance goes up to 5.7 acres, and the important thing about the last two plans that we wanted to show you is both of those are essentially as-of-right. So this is not enhancing the density, what we're talking about. In fact, if, one of the things Mr. Lewis noted in his last comments is the density, the FAR is going from 1 to .85 is what we're talking about in terms of one of the ordinance changes that are made. So I understand that there, there is a gut reaction to, oh my gosh, they're proposing so many units. Well, the number of units that we're talking about, and probably more, could be built right now on the site as-of-right, just based on the fact that it's a really big site. So I, I think that it's important, there aren't, as Paul said, there aren't a lot of tracts of land out there that have this much acreage. The other thing that I would note about this is, it is a, you have a riparian buffer that you have to deal with, you have proximity to the lake, you have all these other things in, well, I understand it's not out of the goodness of our heart that we're doing it. Yes, we get a higher return from the same amount of units, even though we have higher construction costs, but the fact that you end up with more pervious area and you're essentially disturbing less is something that is good for everybody. So we get a better return, yes, we spend more money, you get less area disturbed, and you get better sort of tax base, higher rents, more diversity of housing stock out of it. So going back to a couple of the questions, we did look at how many units we could get. It's, it's actually the same amount or more that we could get as-of-right without you making any changes to it, but what this does allow for is a diversity of housing stock that does draw a higher-end opportunity for different people to stay in the township and to move to the township. And what we're talking about is a product that has been tested in many of the more affluent suburbs, and as Mr. Lewis noted, the one in South Hills has a waiting list, as does the one in Robinson, as does the one in Cranberry, as is the one in Adams Township that's about to get built. Two other things I wanted to note in terms of... So just so you know, this, Patrick, the number of units we showed on here was 246 with 380 parking spaces?
That's right.
Going back to this plan, if you're talking about aesthetics, what a structure like this allows you to do is to have at least some structure parking, either as part of the building or under the building. So when you're talking about what it is that you're going to see, here we have parking that is, right now, as we designed it, and we spent a lot of money and time on it, you're talking one level surface, one level of essentially tuck-under, right? So part of the reason why the aesthetics are better with this, not just necessarily the exterior aesthetics, but you don't have the sea of asphalt that you would need to support the units. You can't support structure parking on a separate 36-unit building. So that was another point I wanted to make, and then also in terms of the overall amenity package, you can't support on a scattered site, which is what either of these other options are being, the level of amenity package that you would be able to support in a single structure. You have to heat, you have to cool, you have to go ahead and operate it. This does, this does not lend itself to it, nor does this. So those are just the sort of market realities of running it, and what, what again is surprising is that there's nowhere where this is permitted at Peters. So by tucking it under along sort of the, the end of the township, that's a good spot to have it, and Patrick did note to me before I got up here that we did get the preliminary results back of our traffic study, and as predicted, you know, the, the volumes that, that we generate or somebody else would generate from this site are going to require the signalization of Water Dam and Gally. So that's all I had. I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has, but I wanted to address Mr. Arcurry's questions and Mr. Lewis's questions from last time.
Well, and I respect the comments that you're making, and I think I'm missing really the focus of what I find to be a negative. When I was a kid, I had model...
This does, this does not lend itself to it, nor does this. So those are just the sort of market realities of running it. And what, what again is surprising is that there's nowhere where this is permitted in Peters. So by tucking it under along sort of the, the end of the township, that's a good spot to have it. And Patrick did note to me before I got up here that we did get the preliminary results back of our traffic study. And as predicted, you know, the, the volumes that, that we generate or somebody else would generate from this site are going to require the signalization of Waterdame County. So that's all I had. I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has, but I wanted to address Mr. Arcuri's questions and Mr. Lewis's questions from last time.
Well, and I respect the comments that you're making. And I think I'm missing really the focus of what I find to be a negative. When I was a kid, I had model railroads. I had an HO set and I had a Lionel set. And what you are talking about, bringing into this community to me is like taking my Lionel apartment and putting it into the HO-scale residential property. And it's just something that I'm not ready to embrace as being characteristic of what I vision this community is representing. It's too big. Could you make it into two modules that might become more appealing to me? Quite possibly, but that's why I'm an advocate for saying, let's not change and make it unlimited to how many units can be in the building. Let us maintain a flexibility with regard to if a program were to come in and it needed to have this council to take action to grant a departure, then I, when we had that in hand, we could certainly do it and do it with a much more justified answer, but that's why I'm still a no. But thank you.
So, Mr. Lewis, are you saying that the problem I, and I understand what you're saying, you're, you're being asked to vote on something you don't know what you're getting, right? So that's a--
Well, quite frankly, over the tenure that I've been here, we've encountered that a number of times.
Right.
We've been sold one bill of goods and ended up having to deal with another.
So the, the problem is, is the 36 limitation--
To unlimited is just untenable to me.
Right, I understand, but 36 is untenable is, is the way we see it to have any sort of diversity or come close to being able to do--
And I can respect that.
Yeah.
So what will the number be?
Well, I don't know that it's an arbitrary number. It'd take some creativity to come up with something that is in harmony in my mind for what belongs in this township. But I'm just one guy sitting here.
I think just, and I, I understand where you're coming from as well. I think one point I'd like to make is if, if this amendment were not to pass, another developer could build just as many units or potentially more without having to come through this process and having to seek council's approval. And that would be fine, right? So I think there is some risk in that end, whether that's, I don't think it would be Al Nayar to build that type of development, but I have a, another developer very well could, and it would not solve your concern of there, of it being just too many units.
Well, I was part of the committee that composed the zoning ordinance, and I have to tell you that one of the concepts for this particular corner of the township was on a recreational-type development that included, and I, I'm trying to remember--
Mercado.
I'm sorry?
Mercado is the name of the, is fashioned after the plant in Florida, the Mercado.
You're over my head, but okay. If that's true. But anyway, that was, I think, an enthusiastically received concept for this parcel as an option. But, okay, I think we've had enough discussion.
Is there anybody else from the audience that would like to address this matter at this time? Okay, seeing none. Does anybody care to make a motion on this?
I move that we adopt ordinance number, whatever it is here. It's not on my fact sheet. And you're going to say, wait a minute, he's making a motion affirmatively to accept it. Yes. That's when you can vote no for it, okay?
Eight-eight, eight-eighty.
Eight-eighty.
There we go. Do I have to do a big, long recital of what all's included?
I'll second. Motion in a second. Mr. Lauer, old call, please.
Mr. Cozer.
Nay.
Mr. Lewis.
Nay.
Mr. Rousen.
Yes.
Mr. Curry.
Nay.
Mr. Perasko.
Yes.
Ms. Shantefell.
Yes.
Mr. Stig.
Nay.
Okay, so the tails, four to three. Three, four. Three, yeah, right. Next item will be the approval for recording purposes of Wallach, of Wallach subdivision.
So Daniel and Joyce Wallach, who are located at 110 Oakhurst Drive, own three separate parcels of land, which they would have a combined area of 6.5 acres. These are the lots as they are currently configured. What is being proposed is that they be reconfigured in this fashion. And all of the lots that are being created will have access to Oakhurst Drive. In fact, there's a restriction on the one lot that it not be accessed, accessed by going to Route 19, so. Is there anything you want to add, Ed?
We're typically not very supportive of flag lots.
Yeah, but--
They meet our ordinance.
It meets our ordinance. And the other thing is, I think there's an advantage here by not, by eliminating that back lots access down to Route 19, so.
Where on 19 does that come down?
Yeah, where--
By the Hidden Valley--
This is where the motel was at the time.
That little part of there. Where does that come on?
Does that come down behind--
The house with the rotunda on the front?
Yes.
With the pillars?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's next to Mrs. Jukovic's house?
Yes.
And then La Bassa's upstairs, that's that bend.
Holy cow, I'm impressed.
That's my street.
You know all those neighbors.
Well, I remember when it was closed off and what was the guy? He died. He belonged to our church, my church. He owned that, the top up there.
Bill Groll.
There you go. Somebody remembers. That's it, is Bill Groll. And I remember when they developed it.
I'll make a motion to approve the Wallach subdivision as shown, drawn, prepared by Archman CE Group, dated July 21st, 2022, for Daniel and Joyce Wallach subject to conditions recommended by the planning commission.
I'll second. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Audience?
I just still have a question where the other lot comes out to 19.
It comes out in the front.
The top one, is that--
Comes out between Dunkin' Donuts and Arby's. That's-- Oh, that's it? But will it be getting access to Route 19?
There will not. Okay.
At this time.
That little strip of grass, so that little strip of grass between the Arby's parking lot and the Dunkin' Donuts parking lot, that's where it would come down.
Really?
Yeah, there's a strip of grass there, yeah, right between the two.
Well, you're more observant than I am.
I spent too much time at the Arby's drive-through window.
Is that where you exit? Is that your ingress too?
No, that, what this does is eliminate that. There's a condition on the plan that, that prohibits that lot from exiting that direction it needs to--
Wait, say that again?
There's a restriction, there's a restrictive cut.
It has to go to Oakhurst.
They can't access it from 19. They couldn't get an HOP from PennDOT anyway.
So you can go, you can go out that way?
No.
So I was going to say, how's this going to act? How are you going to get out of that lot?
Right.
On the right there, to the right of the house?
With the green lines. That section there, the lane with the green lines.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post carries seven-nothing.
Kind of bizarre setup, but--
Next item will be approval of the Frobe Farm subdivision.
Frobe Development LLC is seeking council approval for the Frobe Farm simple subdivision plans. The Frobe Farm is approximately 87-acre parcel of land. In April of 2022, Frobe Development LLC purchased 38 acres from the Frobe Trust. Frobe Development has entered into a sales agreement with Frobe Trust for the purchase of the remaining parcel. In order to have the ability to record parcel A, this subdivision is required. There was a prior subdivision of this property, and the requirement of that prior subdivision is that further subdivision of the property, including this, could not occur until a preliminary plan was filed. A preliminary plan has been filed for the entire parcel. So on this plan, the, the recommendation of the planning department and the planning commission is that a note be placed on this parcel indicating that no further subdivision of parcel A or the remnant parcel shall occur without the submission and the approval of a full preliminary plan for the 87 acres. So now it's requiring that that preliminary plan in fact be approved as well. This has been reviewed by the owner. They're, they're prepared to accept that condition, and it's going to be our recommendation that this subdivision be approved.
So neither of, there's two parcels, right?
Yes.
And the first parcel was addressed and said that there was no further, it couldn't be developed until the remainder of the farm got developed?
No, what, what, what it said was, if you look at the entire parcel that, prior to the subdivision--
Okay.
There was a subdivision that, that provided for those lots along Meredith Drive.
Yeah, oh, the one on the left, left there?
Yeah, so this--
There's houses there.
This entire parcel on both sides of Frobe Road, there was a restriction that no further subdivision be done until there was a preliminary plan for the entire parcel filed.
And that was a result of them selling off three or four parcels right alongside the township park.
Okay.
So what they've done is they've, they've filed a preliminary plan--
For the whole thing.
For the whole thing. It hasn't been approved yet, but they have filed it, and that was the only requirement. This subdivision now requires that not only do they file that preliminary plan, but that preliminary plan be approved before there's further subdivision of the two parcels that are being created.
Well, if somebody purchases the remnant parcel outside of, I don't know who it is that's trying to purchase these now, are they then bound to that preliminary plan?
For a five-year period.
Correct.
And they sold, they've sold the whole farm, right?
They, they have closed on the one parcel, the other parcels covered by a sales agreement, which has not been--
So they sold the red parcel?
Yes.
Okay. So they sold the red parcel without coming in for approval? Is that what you're saying?
They have, I think they had a preliminary plan that--
No, no, no.
Okay, exactly. I'm a little confused as to what we're being asked to do here, because you're telling, there's two parcels up on the map, right?
Right.
And that's what we're being asked to vote on?
Yes.
But if they've already sold the red parcel, what are we voting on?
It doesn't exist. That's all one--
That's why--
They can't record it. That's why--
So they sold the red, they, they got a title company to sign off on that without a subdivision?
Correct.
Okay. Somebody committed malpractice, and all right.
But they want to record that, that--
Well, I understand. Okay, now I understand. I couldn't understand because, I mean, you were telling me that piece was sold, and I couldn't fathom how it would have been sold without us having subdivided it before. That just goes to show how badly people want to get into Peters Township, because, I mean, they just look past, you know, formal requirements of getting like a title policy and actually doing what they're, I'm sorry, I'm preaching. Anyway--
The bottom part's under contract.
No, the bottom part's been sold.
Sold.
They sold it without--
Okay.
I don't know how, but anyway.
And is there, so what's the requirement for the other parcel if we do this? Nothing? They can't develop that?
No, they have to, they have to file and have a preliminary plan approved for the entire, both parcels. And they're in the process of doing that. They have filed a preliminary plan for the entire property.
And then, then after five years, though, then it would just revert, right? The plan wouldn't be any good anymore if we approved it.
You could not hold them to the preliminary plan after five years.
Right, well, that, which is like the case in any--
Yes.
They, they wouldn't have the benefit of the preliminary plan after five years. So if we change the ordinance and we eliminate the quarter-acre lots, they couldn't rely on that after five years.
It cuts both ways.
So you're telling me they got, I'm sorry, I cannot, they got the deed recorded without this?
No, they do not have, they, they can't record the deed without--
So they dropped all that money and didn't get a deed? All right. I'll make a motion that we approve for recording purposes of the Frobe Farm subdivision as shown on drawings prepared by JMS Engineering dated July 5th, 2022, for Frobe Development LLC.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion from council, audience?
But this is a scary concept to see all these new homes that potentially would sit out there.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Post carries seven-nothing. Item will be award of a contract for the installation of carpeting at the library. Do you want to--
Yeah, sure. We, as councils are aware, we previously rejected bids on this project due to the lack of bid security, and we rebid it. Just to give you some idea of what you see on the screen, we, we got three bidders who submitted when we opened. The base bid is to re-carpet the remainder of the first floor of the library. Alternate number one is do the work at night. And alternate number two is to re-tile a stairwell in the library. This project, we had about $50,000 budgeted, not only for this, but some electrical work in the library as well. After reviewing the bids with the architect as well as the library director, Ms. Love, we're recommending that the base bid and alternate number one of Rusmer floors be awarded for this project. The work being done at night is substantially easier on the operations of that library, so.
Are these the same bidders that bid previously without--
Uh, yes, with the exception of Continental Flooring. They did not bid last time.
What would we budget for this work?
$50,000. We've already spent $11,649, and what you'd be awarding is about another $28,000, roughly.
There's a balance in that appropriation of $37,000.
I was just wondering, like, I just wanted to know, like, we're not doing the stairwell because of, because it's--
I, I don't think we should be doing the stairwell, was, one, it wasn't an item that was included in the budget. Two, if you go over and look at the stairwell, its problem is its maintenance in terms of cleaning, not that there is a safety hazard in the, in the use of the stairs. And the stairwell that we're talking about is used primarily by staff as opposed to the public.
Can anybody make a motion here?
No.
I'll make a motion that we accept the base bid and alternate number one of Rusmer floors and for re-carpeting the first floor of Peter's Township Public Library and the cost not to exceed $27,976.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries seven-nothing. Next item will be an award of a bid for the cure-in-place storm sewer line project.
So the Peter Township 2020 budget is amended, includes an appropriation of $250,000 for the maintenance of the township storm sewer system. We accepted bids for a cured-in-place program. Those bids are, as shown on the screen. Insight Pipe is clearly the, the low bidder. There's a tremendous gap. We have been in touch with Insight, and they are comfortable with their number. This is a contractor who has done a number of projects for us, and so we have confidence that in fact they can do it for that price.
I'll make a motion that we award the contract to Insight Pipe for the total of $134,212.50 based upon the estimated quantities and unit prices listed in the proposal.
Second.
Just for clarification, this does not include Oakwood, correct? Because it was referenced in your manager's report.
It does not, no. That was a typo.
Okay. All right, motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post carries seven-nothing. Final item of new business will be a special permit for Confluence Financial Partners.
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post carries seven-nothing. Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the payroll bills.
I find it to be in order. I would note that July was apparently a very bad month for roadkill. We spent $1,075 paying for picking up of dead animals, which is a little higher than normal, but I move that the bills be approved and submitted. Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post carries seven-nothing. Not seen anything under correspondence. Is there anything anybody wants to discuss under the minutes? Miscellaneous, Paul, turn to you.
Yeah, I didn't understand this.
Voting districts?
So just as redistricting is required at the state and federal level, redistricting is required at the township level as well. And what I simply want to do tonight is, and I, I have copies of this for you to take with you, is to, to present this, this redistricting map was done by our individual handles, our GIS system. But this, what you see there are the current districts, A, B, C, and D. And what this would do is adjust those boundaries so that in fact, the attempt would be to keep the number of housing units-- keep the number of housing units in each district to be similar and keep neighborhoods and streets together as best we can. What this map shows is what those changes are and what you can see is we're pushing boundary lines, but trying to keep the areas fairly intact. Currently, you can see that's the number of homes in each of the voting districts. The goal is, you made them equal, is they have 2,067 in each. And you can see what this proposed map does in terms of that. We don't have district elections coming up soon, but I think you want to enact this so that not this fall, but next spring's elections, these new districts are defined because it's going to change voting places for people. And what you do not want to do is institute this in a presidential election year. I think that'll be more confusion than anybody can handle. And I think if we have, you know, next year where people who are moved from one district to another can find their voting place, I think that would be a positive thing. So like I said, I have copies of this, when we get done with the meeting, I'll distribute them, you can all look at them. If you've got suggestions where we can tweak it, that would be good. We're gonna have to adopt this, I'm not sure by resolution or ordinance, and then we need to get this to the county because they'll be responsible for a notification of voters. They'll also be responsible for doing the division of the districts in the voting areas, so. Another thing that we wanted to do tonight was to bring you up to date on Hidden Valley and talk about that.
I can do that. Just an update on where we stand with the Hidden Valley road landslide. A few weeks ago, we took soil borings, three borings in the road. We have the results of those back, Gateway's Geotechnical Engineer took a look at those, fairly optimistic about the depth of competent material, we may be able to get away with like a jumbo block wall instead of a beam and lagging wall that we did last time, I mean, so fingers crossed there. But we needed more information, I guess where the footer of that wall would sit, we needed to know where the depth of competent material was there as well. So we had an excavator go out last Friday and dig some test pits. Gateway's still looking at the results of those test pits, try to gather their thoughts, I'm gonna give them some time, you know, maybe another week or two to get us a final report back and a recommendation on what to do. And I think, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we're gonna budget this for next year project, it's not, it really hasn't gone anywhere in a couple months that I can tell, the road seems pretty stable at this point, we have public works putting some cones and just trying to push traffic off the edge of the road there at the location of the slide, so. So far, so good, we'll wait to get the final report back from Gateway, but hopefully we can, we can do something differently than a beam and lagging wall.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Whatever the solution is, it will not be cheap.
Well, it goes back, goes back to what I said before, we're spending a heck of a lot of money for a road that only services the country club, not that I have anything against the country club or anyone who, you know, goes there, my point though is that it's a lot of money that we're spending to keep that road open.
Do we have the ability to vacate that portion that we don't want anymore?
There's a process to do that.
Well, yeah, we'd have, you know, have to pass an ordinance to vacate it.
Maybe we should fix it and vacate it and then, I mean, that's costing us a lot of money between the last one and this one. What do we pay for the last fix?
Paul, $320,000? This will probably be just about as much. I mean, you're looking at, you know, almost three quarters of a million dollars to fix what's essentially a.
Entrance road to the country club.
A country club entrance. I mean, not, you know, I mean, although, I mean, obviously there was an agreement at some point with the country club when we took that road over, so.
Yeah, I don't know.
Obviously, none of us were party to that, but I think anyone anticipated that someday this would become such a problem.
I think I wanted to bring council up to date and I, I have not learned that this is not to be an electronic billboard, but we have a, an application for, for a billboard along Route 19. This is, is it Cagney Lane there?
Yes.
It's at, it's at that, this location here across from.
That's over Cagney Drive.
Yeah. So this is a use by right, so we will be issuing a permit for it. The one thing about billboards are that they are the primary use on the property, so I'm not sure whether you can subdivide the property, but for right now, that'll be the use, although it's not an electronic sign, the size of that sign would be similar to the one that sits at the end of Valley Brook Road.
Paul, if you go back to that other picture, how big's that parcel that it's gonna be on? Is it that whole thing along 19?
It's.
That whole lot one?
It's that whole lot one.
Which is a steep.
Is it?
Yeah.
And you can only put one per lot?
It's a primary use, it's just like it takes the place of a house. So they can't go to, if they put the billboard on, they can't put a house on the lot.
So what it tells you there is that, is 4.24 acres.
Okay.
Obviously, they figured out the lot wasn't built, the cost of owning a house on there exceeded what they can make on from a billboard.
The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention, we have a request from the, an informal request from the school district for school resource officers in all of the schools. So we are in the process of putting an ad out for full-time police officers, also what we're referring to as seasonal police officers. We've met with the union, they're willing to allow us to have in essence, police officers who would be compensated as we would our part-time police officers and have them work on a seasonal basis, meaning work the school year. So they would work 200 days for the year. This would be a substantial savings to the school district and the community as a whole to be able to accomplish this. I don't know whether those officers exist though, and so.
Well, that's my concern, it seemed to me if you're gonna be putting out for a job that's a seasonal job versus a full-time position, the quality of applicant you're gonna get is probably gonna be a lot less.
No, I'm gonna disagree with you, you know, I'll give you a perfect example, Sergeant Heinlein left here, works on a seasonal basis for the upper St. Clair School District, you would do well to have someone of the quality of Sergeant Heinlein in your schools. And so there, the thing you have to understand about police officers, they retire, some of them as early as 50, some of them at 55, and a lot of them are out working either as part-time police officers, full-time police officers, or working security in other locations.
Deputy sheriffs, there's a lot of deputy sheriffs sometimes.
And I think it's an opportunity to get somebody who's seasoned and brings that kind of experience, so, but I just don't know whether we're gonna find them, and so that's why we're gonna do this as a two-pronged approach, we're gonna go out and look for full-time officers, we're gonna look for seasonal officers.
Well, is there any like grants that are available because of all that stuff with the shootings at the school?
I.
Is any of that rolled in, any of these appropriation bills that they're?
I haven't seen that, but you know, this request from the school district has just come in in the last couple of weeks.
So this would be one.
So we can look.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Paul, so this would be one officer full-time in each school then?
Yes. Yes.
They're gonna reimburse us 100%?
For, if they're full-time officers, the, it would be for the period of time that they're working in the schools, they would reimburse us.
But if they're part-time, like.
If they were seasonal, that would, they would pick up the entire cost of that.
Just out of curiosity, Paul, how much cost difference are we looking at if you hire three full-time guys versus three guys that would just work during school?
Well, you know what, let us do this, let us bring you those calculations so that we get them correctly. But I can tell you that a, our part-time rate is, is 85% of our full-time rate, but that's not where the, the real savings would be, the real savings would be in all those fringe benefits that you would not have to pay. You know, a police officer's pension alone is worth somewhere between 16 and 18% of pay, so there is a substantial difference. And, and again, the reason why, if you do this on a seasonal basis and you can find retired officers, even out of retired officers out of our own force, you would not have to have them participate in that pension plan. So like a perfect example is Officer, and I don't know that he's interested, but Officer Stevix, who's a, who is a school resource officer for the township, is now in the drop. I don't know whether this kind of employment would, would be of interest to him, and so.
Can you look at what the offset in overtime would be as well during the summer months if we have those guys working?
I'll be honest with you, I haven't seen that offset from these guys working because of the nature of what they've done and it's.
Well, no, I'm saying, I'm saying if we hired those guys, they'd be in a pool that could fill call-offs and vacations rather than paying overtime to somebody else.
We could take a look at that, you know, because my goal would be to, if you're gonna have five full-time officers, we're dropping people onto those shifts as opposed to having them do other functions. Yeah.
Yeah, we talked about that earlier.
So we're gonna, this is gonna be coming back to you in the future because if, in fact, we move ahead with seasonal officers, that's gonna take a contract change, it's gonna take a change to our pension plan.
And is the school district giving you an idea how quickly they want to do this?
I think the school district wants to move immediately, but the problem is going to be, for instance, if we go out to hire full-time officers, we'll be months, even if we could find them, we'll be months before they'll be field-trained. So this will not happen at the beginning of the school year. There's no way for that to happen.
No, I think we all know that, I was just curious what their timetable, I mean, school starts in, what, two weeks? Not that any of us are counting the days or anything.
We have set the date for the township tour for August 29th, 5:00 PM, starting here. Next meeting, I'd like to have a follow-up to the workshop we had on the performance review, to complete that and put it in a position where council can take action on it to adopt it. And I don't think there's really anything of note on the zoning hearing board report, so.
Paul, how long will the tour be?
We have it scheduled from 5:00 to 9:00, but I don't think it's gonna last that long.
We won't have daylight.
Well, there's some things we want to look at inside a building, so we're gonna put those at the end.
Just pair it down, see if they can find anything in the old days. Unless Zooks comes, then we might make it as long as.
Just to spend more time with it.
Before he leaves.
Is there anything anybody wants to see added to the next agenda?
We can get an update for the Peters Lake dam.
I don't know that there's gonna be much of an update yet.
There's gonna be much update going on.
Yeah.
Can we get an update on cell service?
On what?
Like the cellular service issue?
Well, actually, I can give you a little bit of an update right now, we finally have found someone at Verizon who's willing to talk to us. We have a meeting set on August 19th to sit down with them to talk about 5G cellular towers, kind of mimicking what AT&amp;T is doing up East McMurray Road, I don't know what the outcome of that's going to be. We're, we have just about completed the agreement that will allow, in essence, a tower to be placed in Peterswood Park, that the, what the hang-up is right now is that I want to make sure that that tower can not only accommodate AT&amp;T, but it can accommodate Verizon, of course, AT&amp;T could care less whether Verizon's on there. So I just want to make sure before we enter into agreement with, that we can meet that goal, because that was an initial goal, so, but that's kind of where we are.
And you said that was in Peterswood Park?
It's in Peterswood Park, what we're gonna be doing is, right now, it's a 90-foot pole, which is a little bit higher than what the standards are on the football field, it's gonna be on the far end where that new parking lot is. And, you know, to be able to put a tower there requires co-location and we're, what we're gonna do to accomplish that goal is that AT&amp;T is gonna pay for sports lighting on the extended portion of the, of the football field, so that in fact it can be lit for, for practice, so.
Okay, what's the status of the coffee shop thing with Robinson?
The coffee shop, I think, is dead. I don't, you know, we sat down with Tom Robinson to talk about another endeavor he has, and that was my question, and I don't think he has a use right now. He's running into problems with Pendott on any use that he's been able to identify, they're insisting upon turning lanes on, on Valley Brook Road, and Valley, and turning lanes on Valley Brook Road would be incredibly expensive. So he doesn't have a use right now.
We still, is he still paying his rent?
I don't know that.
No.
Well, I guess he's not paying rent.
No.
Because it's not.
No, it's contingent.
Based upon.
Yeah.
Put in that agreement.
Yeah.
Oh, if not, now he's cleaning the site up.
Yeah, did we get a lot off of him or that didn't happen?
We did, and that's where that parking is that everybody likes on Palaput Drive.
Yeah, we'll have to see where that goes. I don't want to leave him hanging though, I mean, he did do a lot of work down there.
Anything else anyone wants to discuss at this time?
No, sir.
This will be an executive session, meetings adjourned.